Fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen, meeting of the thirty-fourth Council of the City of America. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekal?
Here.
Councilmember Plaidonsen?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protam Turbrak?
Here.
Mayor O'Dowair?
Now, the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve with one amendment. I'd like to add that number seven, motion M. twenty-three thirteen, be added to the standing agenda.
Thank you. Is there support, including that amendment?
Support.
Support. It has been moved and supported. Any other changes? Hearing done, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on the agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dowair?
Yes. And now, please stand for the invocation. We have Rowan Tal Sullivan with us.
As we open in prayer, I'd like to remember our friends in Boston with the tragedy today, with the explosions that took place and have taken lives and have injured many. And I'm sorry if this is first news for, but we do want to, want to pray for them as we start. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you to begin this meeting, living in a nation where we declare that we are under God. And so, Lord, we come to you and we bring the needs of our friends in Boston who are facing tragedy and fear and confusion, frustration, anger, all kinds of emotions, God. And we pray for them, those who have been injured, that you would touch their bodies and cause healing to work. Give wisdom to the doctors as they, as they work with these patients. Give wisdom, God, to the city officials in Boston. I pray that as they look for the perpetrators of this horrible act, that justice will be served. And, God, we desire to live in a nation where life is valued. And I pray, God, that in our city, that we would have wisdom, foresight, we would be continually blessed with leaders, God, in our, in our city here, who make wise choices, good decisions. And, Lord, that we foster an environment where, where life thrives. And I pray, God, for this, this council, for our mayor, for all of our city servants, that you would bless them. And I pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we come to the communication, to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
I'm Sue Richardson, and, here we are, this is Jeff Tong. We've come with exciting news that the history of Berkeley that we've been promising is becoming a reality. This is what the cover will look like. It is due to be released on May sixth, so we will have it for Berkeley Days. And we are planning a book launch on Saturday, May eighteenth, at six P. M. in the ICE Arena. And after that, we will have a book signing, the three of us authors, including the Honorable Steve Baker.
Nobody's called me in twenty years.
See, it's because you're an author.
Another historic moment.
So, you know, we're very happy that this has come to fruition, and we hope that as many of you as possible will be with us at the book signing to celebrate this event.
I think your pictures are all in the book.
And the what?
Their pictures, all of them.
Oh, yes, and we do have a picture of the council member and the city manager in the book, so. So, we're making you famous.
Well, that'll increase sales immediately, of course.
So, again, I hope that you all be able to attend the book lunch, because, you know, we'd love to have you there with us.
Very good. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
And Jeff.
Thank you.
And Steve. All the authors. Anybody else for citizen comments?
Thank you.
Seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item number one, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting on April first, two thousand and thirteen. Item number two, warrant, matter of approving the warrant, warrant number one-two-six-four.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Plaidonsen. Are there any changes, corrections here? Hearing seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Kadekal?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dowair?
Yes. Now, we come to the regular agenda, and I see the first item on the regular agenda is recognitions and presentations, and I don't think we have any such item tonight. So, we move to item number two on the agenda.
Motion number M. nineteen thirteen, matter of authorizing the Twenty-First Annual Berkeley Crop Walk Against Hunger on Sunday, May fifth, two thousand and thirteen, beginning at two P. M. The walk will begin and end at Greenfield Presbyterian Church.
Is there a motion to approve M. nineteen thirteen?
Motion to, oh. I'll support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, with support by Councilmember Baker. Ms. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You know, this item comes before you on an annual basis. The only thing I'd like to add, I don't think I see any representatives out there to talk about this, but, but just to let the people out there know a little bit about it, this crop walk is, is something that's very important for the church. It is actually a five-mile walk, and the route is the same as it was last year. They do have various individuals throughout the area monitoring and working with the individuals that are walking. I know that Public Safety has reviewed their, their route, and I know they have no, no problems with it. Again, this event is organized by a committee of representatives from churches and synagogues, and it's a way for them to come together and, and be able to raise some funds for, for a good cause. The money that's raised goes to, as follows. Seventy-five percent of it goes to the Church World Service or any other relief organization that the walker decides they want to donate those funds to. And the remaining twenty-five percent of the funds go to S.O.C.H., the Welcome-In. And just for information, over the past twenty-plus years, walkers from the congregations have raised over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars throughout, throughout the five, throughout the past years. This is one of a hundred and forty-five local walks in Michigan that is held in order to raise funds. Again, Michigan is the state that leads in fundraising in the country for the Church World Service. So, with that, Your Honor, I'd ask council to consider this and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? I know it's an item that comes up every year, and as a council, we have always been very supportive of the work of Greenfield Presbyterian and the entire pastoral council in, in the city. So, if there are no further discussions, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M. nineteen thirteen?
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
O'Dowair?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M. twenty-two thirteen, matter to, matter to approve an outdoor downtown area art show on Saturday, June eighth, two thousand and thirteen, from ten A. M. until six P. M. The Twelfth Annual Berkeley Art Bash will be located on Twelve Mile Road between Wakefield and Tyler.
Is there a motion to approve M. twenty-two thirteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Plaidonsen, with support by Mayor Protam Turbrak. Ms. Sessa.
Again, Your Honor, this is an annual event. I'm really excited about this. I know that we have a chamber representative, Roseanne Nicolai, to help me describe some of the new events that are happening. Roseanne, thank you for joining us.
My pleasure. City Council, the Art Bash, we're excited, the chamber's excited again to be having it this year. We have a hundred, over a hundred and eighteen artists, along with then a wing that'll be nonprofits. One of the new changes this year is we are going to have food trucks. In the past, we've had a couple more like carnival-type, but it'll be a little bit more gourmet-type choices, along with then, of course, the fabulous restaurants that are on Twelve Mile, too, that people can partake in. The own, the also in addition, as a reminder, as part of it, is our chamber members. We do have that, they have sidewalk sales going on, too, along with on Coolidge. So, it'll be a great time, as it always is. We have thousands of, it's a chance for thousands of people, not only within Berkeley, but outside of Berkeley, to come and visit our great city.
Thank you, Roseanne. I think the Art Bash has become a signature event in the city over the period of the last several years. Are there any questions for Roseanne, or discussion on the Art Bash itself? Well, seeing none, then, enormous support is about to unleash itself. When Ms. Prince calls the roll.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
O'Dowair?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Resolution number R. fifteen thirteen, matter of authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing regarding the proposed operating budget for the City of Berkeley, Michigan for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen fourteen.
Is there a motion to approve R. fifteen thirteen?
Move to approve R. fifteen thirteen.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekal, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa.
Council, this is one of the most important items that appears before you on an annual basis. As part of the budget review, we invite residents and interested individuals to come and speak before the city council and, and comment on the proposed budget before it is adopted. Now, the date that we are recommending for your approval is May the twentieth. Now, we will post this on our website, we will post it in several other areas so that the residents can, can see it, but it's a very important time, and this is when, as I said earlier, residents come in to give us their comments. Now, I know there's, there's a lot of information here that the finance director has placed in your packet, but before I turn it over to him to see if he wishes to further comment, one of the major items that we discuss at this meeting and that everyone will, will get to hear about is the property tax millage rate that we propose to levy so that we can fund the operating budget. And, again, this is one of the major items that we'll be discussing at the hearing, and we'll go into great detail as to how those funds are being spent. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the finance director, David Sabuda. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Mrs. Sessa. Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This'll be the first year where we have the three mills, the voted three mills, will be part of this upcoming budget, the July one, two thousand and thirteen budget. It will generate approximately one point three million dollars, and that is part of the levy that will be, that will be discussed in the public hearing on May the twentieth. I'd also like to remind everyone that we have three study sessions set up. May the thirteenth, Monday, May the thirteenth, and Tuesday, May the fourteenth, six-thirty P. M., and they're always held on the second floor of the Public Safety Department. That's where we go through the budget, line item by line item, and discuss those items that the, that the budget contains. Wednesday, May the fifteenth is reserved, in case we do need it, in the eight budgets that I've done here, and it's been eight now. We've never had to use the Wednesday meeting, which is very nice. But the big change is the addition of the three mills. That is right in the notice. People can see that, it's the second line in the notice, and the revenues would go up about approximately one point three million dollars. And also, this is being posted in accordance with Michigan file law number one forty-one point four-one-two and nine point three of the Berkeley City Charter. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for our finance director? So, we have lengthy budget meetings coming up.
Coming up.
And when you say this will generate one point three million dollars extra, I'm sure what you would like to remind us is that fills holes from the amount of money that is not coming in because of decisions of other branches of government.
That is correct, Your Honor. That is correct. Last year, we levied six point four million dollars. This year, we'll levy seven point nine. Majority of those funds will be going to the major and local street funds and the, the rubbish fund. That's where we are recommending for, recommending that the majority of the dollars go to. Also, there is monies being set aside, being proposed for parks, parks and park equipment, and then, of course, to balance the general fund budget as we, as we go through. As you know, gas taxes are very low, and we are not going to see an increase. State share revenues have stayed flat. We're going to see very, a very, very, very small increase there. And this one point three million dollars is, came in very handy, and I can certainly tell you, our capital improvement program that is being proposed is going from approximately nine million to thirteen million because we have this new levy out there. And that will be in front of the Planning Commission in late April. So, and then you'll see that, of course, at the May twentieth council session.
Very good. So, it seems like there's a lot of work ahead, but they've gone smoothly in the past, largely because everybody's done their job of preparation in advance. All our department heads, our finance department as well in the city, and, and the council members, everybody comes to those meetings very well-prepared, and I'm looking forward this year to a smooth budgetary process as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one, one other small point about the, about the notice in the public hearing, the Downtown Development Authority levy is also part of that public hearing, and the, the two-mill levy, which has been rolled back for headly down to a dollar ninety-two, is also subject to the discussions on that evening also. So, we did, not only do we take care of the city, but we also take care of the DDA at the same time.
Very good. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R. fifteen thirteen?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dowair?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. twenty thirteen, matter of awarding two thousand and thirteen pavement, pavement maintenance program to Cars Outdoor Services Incorporated of Canton, Michigan in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. In addition, authorize four thousand five hundred dollars to Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, HRC, for construction engineering services.
Is there a motion to approve M. twenty thirteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa.
Council, per your direction, I know that staff has been very diligent to make sure that we have a good preventative maintenance program for our, for our streets, and this is something that comes before you on an annual basis as well. One thing that's new in reading the memorandum from our Public Works Director, Derek Schuler, he indicates that we've added a new specification for spray patch, and what this does is it addresses small deteriorated areas that frequently require a cold patch. And I'll have him explain a little further. But, but we did receive three bids. They were each reviewed by our engineer, HRC, and they came to us with a recommendation. The, the company that, that's being considered is a, is a company that is, that we've done business with before, back in two thousand and eight, and, and we were, we were satisfied with them. Also, this company has, does work in other communities, in Dearborn, Farmington Hills, and Livonia, just for your information. This is something that they've done. We did check their background, and the report was that, that they, that they satisfactorily meet our requirements. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Schuler, and give us a little bit more information on this. Derek?
Sure. Thank you very much, and good evening. Berkeley has had a preventative maintenance program for several years now, and this is a continuation of that pavement maintenance program, where we're really looking to extend the service life of the good roads. That's really the focus of this, crack seal, overband, basically preventing the water from getting down to the road base. We did have three bids this year, and we did get a very good price from Cars Outdoor Services, and based on the recommendation from HRC, we'd like to move forward with ninety thousand, which is a little higher than the low bid amount. And what we'd like to do, because we budgeted ninety thousand in the budget, and we had favorable unit prices come in, we'd like to get authorization to spend that full amount on our roads. I'm quite confident that I can spend that money on our roads. And then, the additional forty-five hundred dollars for the construction engineering cost is for inspection and contract administration to Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, our city engineer. And funds have been budgeted in the major and local street accounts, and we're working with the engineers now on the exact locations that we're going to hit. I've got a map in my office of the locations we hit last year, so we'll be spreading out, doing both crack seal and overband. Again, this is just very basic, core preventative maintenance techniques that prevent the water from getting down into the road base. The spray patch that Jane had mentioned is something new that we're going to try out this year to those areas where we frequently have to place cold patch. So, your, your isolated deteriorated areas where we seem to have to go back time and time again to fill holes, we're going to give this a shot because our belief is that we can maybe save a year or two of having to throw cold patch in that hole because of this newer process that just does a better job of binding to the existing pavement. It's not something that we're going to use on, you know, large-scale deteriorated roads, but more of those isolated areas that seem to cause us problems where we're coming back year after year. So, we're going to give that a shot as well. I think that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that council may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Plaidonsen?
Really quickly, for those of us who don't necessarily know the terminology, could you explain what spray patch is versus what cold patch is?
Sure thing. It's a, it's an emulsion-based, so it's an asphalt-based product, liquid, with some stone component to it that is applied hot. And it's applied in a fashion that it actually covers the entire pothole or crack. As opposed to cold patch, you fill it in the hole, and you still have the sides of what you're filling where water can get down. I hope that makes sense. And then that freezes, and then everything's moving and pops up. The spray patch actually covers everything. It's like a big glue patch, and it will prevent water from getting down on the side of that pothole, and thus, hopefully, sticking there a little longer than, than cold patch.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and, Mr. Schuler, thank you for your work in coordinating the bidding process and ensuring that we continue to do what's best for, for our assets and for the city and for those, those that drive upon those every day. Thank you for that. A couple quick questions in terms of timing and notification. So, I noticed in the materials here, the idea was to wrap this up by around June thirtieth or so, is that when might we imagine beginning this process, if we wanted to move forward?
Well, we'll have a preconstruction meeting. Hopefully, after this meeting, within the week, we'll have a preconstruction meeting with the contractor and the engineers where the locations will be determined. And then, I would imagine we're going to get started with this within a couple weeks. The, the process will start, and I imagine it's going to, it won't take them very long to really run through the city. So, starting in a couple weeks, and I would guess probably just a couple weeks' worth of work, so I don't even anticipate going that far into, into June before we're wrapped up.
Great. So, my follow-up question was in terms of the, the pace or the speed at which this process is, is completed and the time it, I don't know if cure is the right word, or how, you know, sets, meaning would we need to notify, would residents be notified, or is it something that just comes and goes?
Good question. We, we don't traditionally notify for this. It does pretty well set up immediately, and after the contractor's sort of train of operation has moved out of the area, it's generally dry and able to be driven upon. So, I don't see that being an impact at all.
Right.
If you get in later in the year, July, August, when the hotter temperatures, there are instances where potentially you could get cars tracking up some of the sealant, so we have to be wary of that, but I think we're early enough in the season that that won't be a problem.
Great. So, minimal impact to those who use these roads on a regular basis.
That's correct. Yep. It's a moving operation, so it'll be out of there quick.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Schuler, they, I noticed in the price here, we've got observation crew days at five hundred and seventy-five dollars a day. Would you explain what that is so people know what's happening?
Sure. This is, this is the, the inspection component in the job. Essentially, what it does is it encourages the contractor to get the job done in a timely fashion because he's being charged for those inspector days, as opposed to being in town and sort of doing some work, leaving town, coming back. The inspector days force him to get the work done as quickly as possible so that he can keep that number within his bid item.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Schuler. You're confident that this company is equipped to handle our needs. They have, if you go to their website, they have a number of different enterprises.
They do, they do, and I've worked with them in the past as well in other communities, and they've done a, a fine job, so I have no concerns with respect to that.
Very good. Thank you very much. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M. twenty thirteen?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
O'Dowair?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. twenty-one thirteen, matter of authorizing the extension of a contract between the City of Berkeley and A&amp;M Service Center Incorporated, three oh three East Harrison, Royal Oak, Michigan, four eight oh six seven, for the pickup, towing, and storage of all impounded vehicles for an additional three-year period, expiring April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Is there a motion to approve M. twenty-one thirteen?
Motion to approve M. twenty-one thirteen.
To approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekal. Ms. Sessa?
Mr. Mayor, this is an agreement that specifically, I say, relates to our Public Safety Department, and they are the ones that, that utilize this agreement for towing and storage and impounding vehicles. This agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney, and he is recommending it for your consideration. Ordinarily, I suppose, we would perhaps go out and, and look for others, but, other contractors, but this company has done such a good job for us that the Public Safety Department has requested that we extend and renew another, a second three-year agreement with them. So, with that, Your Honor, I'd like to ask our Director of Public Safety to, to explain how we utilize this, this program or this, this contract and, and what they do for us. One, one last thing for the city council. Please know, city council, that this contract, we do not any incur, we do not incur any direct costs for this, which is why I am comfortable with, with doing this, if the city council approves this. There are no monies that are exchanged between the city and the contract. Okay? All right.
Very good. Mr. Chief?
As the city manager pointed out, it's a zero cost to the city. This is for towing of impounded vehicles relative to an arrest or an abandoned car or accidents where the cars are not drivable. We've had this company for perhaps twelve years. They're located on Harrison Street, which is just north of six ninety-six and east of Main Street in Royal Oak, so it's convenient to us. They have, in excess of the five trucks required by the contract, they actually have twenty-one, split between two locations, one in Troy and the, one in Royal Oak, of course. We have a twenty-minute response time requirement. They're usually there within minutes, within two or three minutes. They're very, very fast. They have a lot of drivers ready to go. Storage, they have far in excess of the thirty-five vehicle storage requirements that we mandate in the contract. In ten years, I've had one complaint regarding them, and that was over a missing spare tire forgives that expense if we get a not guilty verdict. So everything we could want to do to accommodate motorists, they do. So we recommend this. It's been reviewed by the city attorney. It meets the specification. And over the years, there's only been one fee change. That was going from ten dollars to fifteen for daily storage if someone doesn't pick up the car. Any questions?
How many cars, Chief, would we store there in a year?
You would ask that question. Mike, do you have any idea? It's two or three a week.
At least. Two or three a week.
At the minimum. Well, it would be more than that. In fact, I've got to start counting all the drunk drivers. Their cars get impounded. The accidents are not impounded unless they leave them there for over ten days, then it's declared an A-ban. We don't have an abandoned vehicle problem in this city, so we can't add those. But easily, I'm thinking probably three, four, or five a week.
Wow. That's a lot.
It's a lot of cars.
Yeah. So it's an important contract.
It's an important contract. Our end of it, it's an important contract, not only from the volume of people, but customer satisfaction. We figure these people are like customers. And so as long as we're getting no complaints relative to the towing experience that they have, we feel we're doing something right.
Exactly. Any? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, a quick question. It's on auction vehicles. There's a section here regarding auction vehicles. Do we auction, are many of them abandoned and auctioned?
They get auctioned after a certain number of days, twenty-one days. By law, they can be declared forfeit. They become auctioned then. That happens often in arrest situations. It happens in accident situations where the car is worth less than the payoff from the insurance company. The insurance company doesn't bother. They just pay it off. It's left at the storage yard. In that case, then the storage yard will auction them off. After perhaps sixty days, they'll start to move towards an auction. And then that is collected by the storage company up to the daily fee maximum. That's it, unless somebody claims it, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Prince, please call the roll on M-2113.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaidonson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item M-2313?
Motion number M-2313, matter of receiving and filing a verbal report led by Councilmember Baker on the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference.
Is it a motion to approve M-2313?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Baker?
To part.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Sessa?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an item that was requested by Councilman Baker. But basically, the majority of us here attended the Capitol Conference. And as we all know, we're very fortunate to have Councilman Baker sit as a board member of the Michigan Municipal League. So we have a really good insight in terms of what's happening with the league. And he keeps me informed on a regular basis on issues that relate to cities and the City of Berkeley. But this past week, we all, well, like I said, a few of us attended the legislative conference, and we learned much information in terms of what's happening out there. Now, the majority of us attended just simply one day. So I'd be happy to give people information in terms of what we learned. But before I do, I think I'd like to turn it over, if you don't mind, Your Honor, turn it over to Councilman Baker and let him begin, because he did attend both days of the conference. And he's asked that the rest of us that attended, also attended the conference, just, you know, speak up and give a report in terms of what they learned and what they would like for our council to know. So with that...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for the opportunity here. I do think that this is an important kind of conversation that I'd like us to consider, not only for this session, but at other kinds of events where we have opportunities to interact with other legislative leaders and municipalities around the region and across the state. I think the opportunity to learn and exchange and share and grow is important. And I'm glad that we have a few minutes here to begin that journey with this particular event. As a bit of context, the Michigan Municipal League is a nonprofit that coordinates and advocates on behalf of municipalities across the entire state of Michigan, as its name implies. And that includes cities, townships, villages, and so forth. They have a series of events throughout the year, and this was one of their two major events. They have what's called a Capitol Conference, which is this one. The Capitol Conference, as its name implies, is held in Lansing. So this is usually in the spring, this time of year here in April. And then they have a convention that's held once a year in the fall, and that rotates from city to city to kind of spotlight different parts of the state. And so we look forward to participating and then bringing back information from that fall convention as well. But as far as the Capitol Conference is concerned, this is a little program book that was used throughout the session. It was two days, Tuesday, April 9th, and Wednesday, April 10th. And I took some time off of work and was able to participate in both days. I'll focus primarily on the first day, since I was there and able to add perspective on those items, and then welcome my colleagues who were there with us to comment on the second day as you see fit. So the first day had a series of pre-conference workshops on some topics, including labor negotiations, healthcare reform, the My Place Partnership Initiative, which we'll touch on in a moment, and then things like, you know, something that our city did eighty years ago, the impact of changing from a village to a city. There was a workshop about that journey. And we just celebrated our ninetieth anniversary from becoming a village, and we'll be looking to our city anniversary here coming up in May. Then from there, there was the Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday morning. I was able to participate in that. A lot of the board meetings deal with the governance of the body. So we do things like, you know, there's lots of meeting minutes and comments, and it's opportunities from folks from all the different regions to share what's going on in their communities. For instance, in our space, I highlighted a little bit about our, the book that was mentioned earlier, the Berkeley Day Celebration coming up, the work that we're doing on Coolidge, and our involvement in the transit initiatives on Woodward. Some of the updates that I shared from our part of town, you know. Approval of the budgets, you know, that kind of stuff. They're like six point six million is their overall, their total budget, that kind of stuff. Talking about the 2014 convention. So I mentioned the fall convention. The 2013 convention is going to be in Detroit, so it's just down the street from us. So hopefully, we can have a strong presence. The 2014, so next year's fall convention will be in Marquette. So it's a chance for those of us to explore another part of the state that we may not get to that often. So that's kind of exciting. So there's a whole process of approving that type of thing. I'd like to draw particular attention to one of the items that we spent a lot of time on. It's called the Partnership for Place. And this is a strategic agenda that the Michigan Municipal League is preparing to embark on in the months ahead, particularly over the summer and into the fall. And so we had a chance to better understand the intent of this and get our hands dirty with the drafts of the materials before it rolls out to the entire membership. I briefly hinted at this in prior sessions here, and it's gone from a one-page, you know, fold-out kind of brochure to a multi-page document that describes it in more detail. But the four key initiatives remain the same. This Partnership for Place, subtitled "An Agenda for a Competitive Twenty-First Century Michigan." And so the overarching theme around this, again, is around placemaking and creating desirable locations that folks really look forward to going to and want to stay there rather than, oh, I can't wait to move on, that kind of thing. So really creating this attractive aspect to the state, recognizing that the state is at its strongest when its municipalities are strong. The four agenda items are Funding the Future, Michigan in Motion, Place for Talent, and Strength and Structure. And there's little brief monikers, and I'll share that with us, and I won't get into, I won't read all of the details of this, but it's tremendous work. The brief moniker for Funding for the Future, making sure that funds and tools are available to operate efficiently and work regionally in order to succeed globally. So it talks about, you know, the ways that we want to fund and ensure that we have the tools that municipalities and that the residents and the businesses can survive and thrive together. Second of four key initiatives, Michigan in Motion, shifting from near-exclusive vehicular-based investments to alternative modes of transportation that will accommodate all users, such as pedestrians, bikers, public transit riders, and drivers. And so this aligns well with a lot of the work that we in our region have done in terms of the transit initiatives, the complete streets, recognizing that all of us have options and seek to have choices as far as how we get from point A to point B. So there's quite an extensive agenda of actions and proposals to move forward with that. Third item, Place for Talent, partnering with the state to attract and retain talented workers in our communities through placemaking policies. And so this gets really to, you know, creating that environment, that context. Let's say we can have transit that gets us around, what really is it about our various locations that would attract folks to want to come here and to retain the talent that we already have? You know, we have so many exceptional students going through our school system, and so many of those make decisions to move elsewhere. And time and time again, we'll hear the story about, oh, I'm going to Chicago, or I'm going to Boston, or I'm going to San Francisco, or something like that. And they say, oh, what are you going to do there? Oh, I'm not sure yet, but I'll get settled, and I'll find, and then I'll find a job once I'm there. I hear that again and again and again. And it amazes me, you know, that if folks, you know, they don't go where the jobs are, they go where that sense of place is, that wanting to belong, trusting themselves that they'll find something when they get there. The fourth piece, Strength and Structure, seeking out solutions to invest in infrastructure and development where it will produce the best results and target resources with maximum outcomes. And so what that talks about is being strategic in how we invest in the state. There are certain funding models, and there's some materials that we cover later, this other big document around the transportation systems and things, where some of the funds are spread evenly across the entire state. And so there's money set aside for projects where there's actually no opportunity to leverage those funds. And so those funds get, they're not used, and so they get reallocated and dispersed elsewhere. So what this fourth piece talks about is recognizing what the strategic assets are across the state and ensuring that we structurally allocate funds to best leverage those resources, as opposed to like a peanut butter spread across the state. It's really interesting, all the different funding models, some of the different programs and things. So we spent a lot of time Tuesday in the board meeting discussing this in more detail. There was extensive amount of work in providing comments and feedback to the agenda and how can we, as communities, move forward with this. So that's something that is still in the formative stages with the league, but you can tell they've been working on it a lot since we last had a chance to talk about it. And it's a very exciting items there. The rest of the board was largely procedural, but it's good stuff. They have an MML Foundation, which is, which provides grants and funding opportunities to others. So we had their reports, comments from affiliate organizations, comments from past presidents, and things like that to just add commentary about what's going on. Skipping ahead a little bit to the rest of Tuesday, that was in the morning. From 1:00 to 2:00 was the Governance Committee meeting, which is a wider forum for representatives across the state to talk about, you know, key issues, proposals on where the league stands on certain positions. So there's a series of bills that go through their policy committees, and then it comes to the Legislative Governance Committee in terms of understanding where the league stands on and how it advocates on behalf of our municipalities. And so we have all sorts of details on that, if anyone's interested in the different committees and the materials that we reviewed and what the league's position is on those bills. This is influencing in-flight legislation, so stuff that hasn't been signed yet. There's opportunities to influence to do what's best for our cities, which I think is a tremendous value that MML provides. Then from 2:15 to 3:45 was the Capitol Conference, welcome and legislative update. Governor Snyder joined us briefly to add a few comments and take a few questions. And then we had updates from those different committees around the agenda in more detail, and we were able to ask questions. And later in the afternoon, from 4:00 to 5:30 were the Regional Roundtables. And so the way the MML chooses to organize the state of Michigan is into seven regions. And there's a little map that kind of shows how the regions are aligned. We are in Region One, and for instance, the entire Upper Peninsula is Region Seven, and then they allocate the rest of the state through the different sections. So what the Regional Roundtables offer is an opportunity for folks within a given region to come together, to collaborate, talk about ideas that are more relevant within their particular region. So it's like a good forum for that. And one of the other things that comes out of the Regional Roundtables are the nominations for the, what they call the Race for the Cup, the regional winners for each of the areas. They have projects that talk about the great things that they've done in their cities, and have a little mini competition within each region to say, hey, we have this great project where we did these things, and it's a real interesting narrative of folks coming together, overcoming adversity, and doing some great things on behalf of our city or our school district, or something really cool like that. And so in the Regional Roundtables, we heard presentations. So we're in Region One. There's presentations from the cities of Rochester, East Pointe, New Baltimore, Plymouth, Gross Pointe, and Westland on various initiatives that they've had, including like a Main Street makeover, the Service Line Affordable Protection Program. I like their acronym, the Service Line Affordable Protection Program is slap, you know, slap it into place. Make New Baltimore Your Destination, the Northville Plymouth Fire Agreement, the Wellness Center and Patient Facility in Gross Pointe, and in Westland, the Core Shopping and Dining District, some major work that was done in there. So they nominated those. And the one that won, so we all voted on it, which ones do we want to advance to the finals for the state, which happens in the Fall Convention, the one that won was a combination of Linden, Holly, and Fenton. Those three communities worked together on the Siawashee, yeah, Siawashee River Heritage Water Trail. And so what was particularly compelling about that, it was three communities coming together to celebrate and rally around a shared asset that they had, had a real compelling thing. And they actually had some props, too. So they had, you know, they brought in a big canoe and paddles and put on hats and stuff to tell their five-minute pitch. Not that the theatrics won the day. It actually was a good story. But the energy that they brought to it really showed the passion that they had across those cities. So what happens from these, the Community Excellent Awards, is at the Fall Convention, we'll hear the presentations from each of the winners from the seven regions, and then we'll vote to say, this is the Community Excellent Award for the state that we'd like to recognize the great work that goes on in those things. So there's lots of other details and stuff that happened on day one, but those were some of the highlights. And I appreciated the chance here to just share a little bit, in particular from the board, you know, some of the things that we cover there in that agenda. Really impressive stuff. The participation for the MML Conference, over five hundred people from all across the different municipalities, that's elected officials, that city managers, finance directors, clerks, folks that represent the municipalities and the cities across the state coming together, and of course, across the two days. So that was about it for the first day. I don't know if there are any particular questions or things on that, and then we could move on to day two. Questions, comments on day one?
The only comment is, I know I'd like, the council has asked me to take a look at perhaps putting something that the City of Berkeley has done, because we've done many of the things, many of the projects that have received awards. I know, I just need to get our staff motivated into getting this. But we're going to look at it again.
It's an excellent thing in terms of, yeah, participating in that Community Excellent Award. I think we have some tremendous stories to tell.
We sure do.
Both within the City of Berkeley and then across, you know, even as a region, again, that one, that partnership with Linden, Holly, and Fenton coming together around their river assets, I thought was compelling. And we have great stories, too, about this stuff, not only what we've done, but in partnership with neighbors. So lots of opportunity there. And we look forward to that.
Woodward Five comes to mind.
That's great. And then day two, I was joined by many of the folks here around the table, and those of us that are interested are able to share a little bit, because I guess to finish wrapping up on what's going on for a while here. A lot of what they do are breakout sessions, where they'll have like four to six concurrent sessions around very interesting topics. And it makes it a real challenge if you're the only one there representing a community, because how do you pick, right? And so the nice thing about having colleagues there is we can kind of coordinate ahead of time to make sure we're covered at the various sessions that are running at the same time. And then we can come back and exchange information and say, here's what we learned, or I met somebody that's facing this kind of an issue, and here's what they had to say, and all that networking kind of stuff. So that was a lot of what happened on day two.
Thank you, Steve. We're enormously proud of the work and contribution you make to MML. MML is very important to all the cities in the state. And to have you in a leadership position in that organization is great for us as a city as well.
Thanks.
Any of the rest of you that attended have additional comments? Eileen?
I'd just like to make one comment, and that is that in all the years that I've been going to this, Berkeley is very, very well represented at this conference every year. And I think that's a very good thing. There's a lot of networking that goes on. We meet people from other cities, hear what they're doing and so on, socialize with them. And even though it's just one day, it's just one very important day. Find out what's happening in the government and so on.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to cover one of the things. I went to one of the breakout sessions, and I went to the one from the Liquor Control Commission. And for those of you that don't know it, this is a list of the licenses that are available. Now, they're seven pages long, and there's eighteen for a page. And this is different types of licenses, not people are licenses, different types of licenses. And one of the big problems is the, there's been some review of the organization, the Liquor Control Commission, and the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, and what they've done is they've usurped some of the power from the local governments. There's a column here that says, is local legislative body approval required? And most of those are no. Now, there used to be... Now, they used to be yes, but because of a change in the interpretation of the regulations, they are now no. And so myself and the other people that were in that meeting, we're very concerned about if it says no and we don't have to approve it, if we have a concern, how do we get our concern to Liquor Control Commission? And we have reached agreement with them that there is, from the time that the clerk gets a notice that there is a request for a new or a change to a liquor license in the city, they will wait 60 days, basically, and during that time, we can input our comments to it, and they will, in fact, look at those comments, because they don't have to by the interpretation anymore. But, so I thought that was very important, because we got, and I wasn't the only one that, where they're arguing about it, there was quite a few people, it was quite interesting. And so I thought it turned out very well, it was very interesting, because I didn't know that there were seven pages of these different kinds of licenses, and there's a lot of them, so hopefully we've made some progress on that, so that we, the city can input their...
Well, thank you, and that's very important. What is, I suppose, irritating about a lot of these folks in Lansing is they talk about local control at one side of their mouth, and they take it away with the other. And it's totally infuriating, because I think the local communities need to have a say in the allocation of those kinds of licenses in their community. They are the people who have greatest concern, greatest affection for the community, greatest interest in making sure things go well. And when you have people making decisions like that in Lansing, or anywhere else for that matter, they don't have the same care, and that concerns me. So I'm glad to see that you guys were able to make some headway on that.
We voiced our opinions.
Voiced our concern, well, that's as much as we can do. Councilmember Kadek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my colleagues said most of what went on over those last couple days, or a few days. I was able to attend a couple breakout sessions myself, and what I like about it is, even last year, you meet people from other communities, and we're not the Lone Ranger in a lot of situations that are going on. And one of the breakout sessions I went to had to do with lobbyists that are fighting for the municipalities and fighting for everyone together, and they want to hear our voices, and they need to hear our voices, so we can fight situations like Councilman Blanchard speaking about. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you know, one of the things I enjoyed, as already been said around the table, is not just the networking, but also the fact that since there's a good representation of Berkeley, we can spread and go to some of the sessions that we all have interest. For me in particular, I was interested in the EVIP program, I wanted to find out what were some of the updates. And of course, that turned out to be quite an interesting session as well, one of those very lively sessions where a lot of people were very, very concerned about the remarks or the requirements now that EVIP, that the governor's office is asking. And it's not so much asking for this information, I don't think the governments have any qualms with the data, it's that some of the, a lot of the information is duplicative, it's time-consuming, and that many are small cities, and they just don't have the staff to be able to be monitoring and placing this type of data. So there were a lot of cities there that were very upset with, it's fine to have this information, but what are you going to do with it? What is its purpose? Who's going to review it? And so on and so forth. So it was interesting. And of course, I attended another session called Trends in Local Fiscal Health, and basically that session just talked about a survey that was done, and it showed how other cities are doing, where their funds are going to, and things of that nature. And as has already been said, you know, it's, what's happening in our community is happening in a lot of cities. So the only good thing, I guess I should say, is that our city is faring a little better than most communities, so I'm glad to hear that. And I really appreciate the council and the staff, those that are able to attend this session, because we learn so much. I mean, I know that I send you data, I send you reports and things of that nature, but it's always so good to be at that meeting and to hear and to speak and to meet with other elected officials and appointed officials as well to talk. So I appreciate that, that the council has a great interest in that, so thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Anything else on MML?
Your Honor, if I may, take a few minutes of your time. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I had the opportunity to go to the personal property tax breakout session at the Michigan Municipal League, as well as a few others, but this one was very well attended, it was very lively, a lot of angry people. Basically, what is happening here is there is a phase out of the personal property with a replacement revenue of 80%. Berkeley stands to lose approximately $267,000 due to this, due to this change in the law. The big issue here is that no one knows how this law is going to work, including lobbyists, and that was very evident at this session. The big, the other big issue out of this is that, the reason why we're going to lose $267,000, the majority of our stuff, the majority of our personal property tax is less than $40,000. But the other big news was this, is that the replacement revenue that they've been talking about, that we will not see, that is going to be voted on in July, in August of 2014, is going to a five-member authority, not to the state legislature. The five-member authority would be appointed by the governor, and then you would have to come to the authority to get your 80% appropriation. And no one's sure how that's going to work yet, but that's the way the law is written right now. There was a lot of discussion about that. So the first piece, $267,000, we're at risk for, that's going to go into effect July of 2014, and the second piece is this five-member authority, and this is a statewide authority, comprises the entire state, and everybody is subject to that. And the state legislature would not be a part of the appropriation process on that 80%, on that 80%. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for the good news again. So just to connect this and connect the dots, then, with our budget discussion of this $1.3 million that you're talking about we're going to get.
Yes, sir.
You just accounted for $267,000 just disappearing right away.
That is correct.
In addition to all that has disappeared in the last, even since we passed this millage?
That is correct. I'd also like to point out, and the league has pointed out very clearly, that local units of governance since 2001 have lost $6.1 billion in state shared revenue. That's across the state, $6.1 billion in state shared revenue. And that money went to the state of Michigan, it did not come to the locals as it should have.
Well, I'm glad at least that Michigan Municipal League is keeping a little pressure on and doing what they can and to organize support and to hopefully lobby some of these folks to understand the needs of local communities and local people, because this thing rolls down to the end all the time. That's why we have to have, we had to have that millage.
That's correct.
You know, so they can get along with not increasing taxes, but we don't have services if we don't. So we're always indebted and thankful to the people of our city for being wise last August in making this decision, and you can see how far we're thinking they were in another $267,000 disappearing since that vote. So we're thankful to them. Are there any other joyful pieces of information to be shared? Very good. Well, seeing none then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-2313?
Kadek.
Yes.
Plaid Onson.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrak.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes. And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and Councilmember Plaid Onson is first up.
Just one thing tonight, I just want to remind everyone to join me and the Environmental Advisory Committee this Wednesday night, 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM, upstairs at the Berkeley Front for a workshop on today's recyclables, yesterday's trash, so looking at reduce, reuse, and recycle. So again, 6:30 PM, upstairs at the Berkeley Front. I'll be there, hopefully all of you will be there as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few items tonight. This past Thursday, I had the pleasure of attending the senior volunteer luncheon, and they had two senior of the year awards given out, and one was to Ella Glassmeyer, and the other is to Josephine Brewer, and I'd like to congratulate both of them. We have Josephine here tonight with us. This past Saturday, I was across the street during the vaccination where, for the animals, the dogs and cats, and I have to congratulate our city clerk, Ms. Prince, and her entire staff and the volunteers that worked that from 9:00 to 1:00. They were kept quite busy, and what's great about this, it's not just Berkeley residents that are attending this. So we're drawing people in from other cities that, who knows, may go out or find a place to eat afterwards. Hope they don't leave the dog or cat in the car, but, but no, it gives another avenue for them to see the great city of Berkeley. Last meeting, former Mayor Pro Tem Dale Goodcourage was here, and he asked me to remind you that on Saturday, April 27th, they are having the dedication of the Sergeant Matthew Leach Memorial Monument. It is from 11:00 AM sharp at the Berkeley American Legion. The public is invited, and he asked anybody that's interested to attend to please attend. Also, that evening, to further help funds that will not only help Sergeant Leach's family, but other soldiers' families, they're having a pub crawl in Ferndale. And that will be Saturday, April 27th. It's a $20 donation, and it's going to be at Rosie O'Grady's Buffalo Wild Wings and Dino's. And again, this will be a continuation of Saturday's events. And last but not least, I know it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but my heart and prayer goes out to everybody in Boston. We've had Berkeley residents run the Boston Marathon before. Some of us, I'm sure, have known of someone that has run, and to all the families and residents in the Boston area, my heart is with them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Turbrak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to everybody of the Public Safety Golf Outing that's coming up May 17th of this year, and the reason that I bring it up now in particular is if you register before April 17th, it is only $75 per person, so you've got a couple more days if you register after that, I believe the price goes up just a little bit. So a little advanced warning, you have about two days, I believe, from now to get that in. It is going to be May 17th, it's at 1:00, and it is again at Rackham. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. A couple more quick things. Mark Twain once wrote that "our opinions do not really blossom into fruition until we have expressed them to someone else." And again, that's, "Our opinions do not really blossom into fruition until we have expressed them to someone else." And I offer that up as an opportunity to remind us of just such a way to express your opinions. There'll be a transit open house, I know you're all excited about that, it's going to be sweet. Thursday, the 25th of April, and it's free, open to the public at the, at our community center here in Berkeley from 5:30 to 7:30. So again, that's Thursday, April 25th, 5:30 to 7:30, Community Center. The topic is around transit, and in particular, along the Woodward Corridor. I mentioned it earlier about our involvement among many municipalities in looking at this shared asset across its entire stretch from Detroit up to Pontiac, and so there's a series of these open houses being scheduled at locations throughout the entire run of Woodward with the same content. So if for some reason you're not able to make it to this session here on the 25th, there's others that are available. Our session will be focusing on our part, our stretch of Woodward, and it'll involve not only folks from Berkeley, but also Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, and Royal Oak. It's a great opportunity to see what some of the ideas are in terms of rapid transit along Woodward Corridor, what would that mean to us, what are some of the different options in terms of a design? You know, there's some real clean ones that just say, hey, the Woodward line should stand Woodward, so it looks just like, just goes up and down. There's others that they have some creativity with kind of zigging and zagging and leaving Woodward and going into some different parts of some of the cities, and there's, you know, pros and cons to that. So it's an opportunity to take a look at those different designs, talk to us, talk to other elected officials, talk to transit experts, and offer your opinion to help to shape the direction of transit as we seek to create this compelling place, so that we can have a thriving Berkeley and a thriving region. The only other thing that, something I learned at the Capitol Conference, as a matter of fact, one of the sessions, I helped moderate a panel discussion around vacant property in our Berkeley ordinance was highlighted as one of the key things, you know, that other cities could think about in terms of vacant property ordinances, so that was kind of cool. Anyway, in the course of that, one of the speakers in that panel discussion turns out to be involved in the National Premier Soccer League. He owns a, co-owns a team in Detroit, the Detroit City FC Football Club is the team that he co-owns. And he brought to my attention, and I'm sure a lot of you folks knew this, that we have a team here in Berkeley, as a matter of fact. I hear some folks know about this already. The new name is the FC Sparta, Michigan. They moved here from Windsor, as a matter of fact. They'll be playing out of Hurley Field, and their first game is on Sunday, May 12th, so there's a little bit of time to get your tickets and get your gear and all that stuff to help support our new local team as part of the National Premier Soccer League. So I'm glad to hear that some folks know about this and the history behind that, and we look to welcome this team to our city and to help participate in the league and see what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Just a short update on the library. Barbara Krueger made a presentation on her book Detroit, Detroit's Historic Places of Worship, and it attracted a crowd of about 70 people on March 26th. This was sponsored by the Friends of the Library, and in addition to this, the Friends of the Library have donated over $10,000 to the library last year, including the money for downloadable eBooks, audio subscriptions, a new disc cleaner resurfacer, and over $2,000 in children's programs. And also, the Four Seasons Garden Center recently provided a spring cleanup of the grounds at no charge to the library. They trimmed the ornamental grasses, mulched, picked up debris, and overseeded the grass. The library looks much better, especially from Coolidge, and so when you're, when you happen to be in Four Seasons, please say thank you on behalf of the library and the city of Berkeley for what they do for us. And this Friday is the Tin Can Auction at Berkeley High School. It starts at 5:00 and goes to approximately 10, maybe a little longer, depending on how many items they have to call out and so on. But there's usually about six, maybe 700 items there that you can bid on for the price of four for a dollar, four tickets for a dollar, and it's always fun, win or lose is fun. That's all tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one thing. I was also at the Parks and Rec luncheon for the volunteers with Councilmember Kadek and Councilwoman Stedman, and congratulations to Josephine, but I would like to say that the Parks and Rec does a wonderful thing by identifying and highlighting and honoring their volunteers. And we need volunteers in this city desperately. We couldn't function without them, and so I want to thank all the volunteers we have in the city, and I am currently working on a plan to do more for our volunteers, and I'll bring that to the council later on, but I just want to say thanks to all the volunteers for what you do.
Thank you. Ms. Sessom.
Just a few items, Your Honor. I too want to thank our city clerk for the animal control clinic. I think she mentioned we had about 100?
115.
115, and that's kind of a little bit of a low turnout because of the weather. So one of the things I asked her to consider looking into, and I'm not so sure we want to do it, but is to provide some sort of those tags, animal tags.
Or ID.
And she did speak with a physician, but he was concerned, or she was concerned, because it is quite painful to do, and the pets are not happy once that's done. It's not as simple as it sounds, so I don't know if that's something that we're going to offer. But I asked her to consider doing that, I think that's something that is needed and that would be good. And it's not that expensive either, but still, sadly, it hurts the animals tremendously, and they may be not happy campers. And we don't want to get into any kind of problems with the pets, so we'll figure out another way. You know, as a city manager, I'll tell you, things have changed since I've been to school. I mean, I never in a zillion years thought that I would have to deal with many of the things that are happening in today's worlds. Obviously, you know, we deal with, you know, weather, weather issues, tremendous weather issues, or we... weather issues, or we deal with, I guess I'm talking about natural disasters, or now where we're dealing with, with terrorism and things of that. I mean, I know it's always been on the back of our mind, but to actually see that, you know, it's, again, it's not something that I ever thought in the zillion years that I, as a city manager, would, would have to be addressing. But it's important to be prepared, and staff, my assistant and I will be attending tomorrow at Oakland County, one of the programs that they're offering. It's called, it's an active shooter program is what it's called. And basically, that's, again, gives us some ideas as to how to prepare in the event a shooter walks into your building. And I've had some training already, just some very, very small, but I'll, I'll take it again, take a look at it. I know Councilman Blanchard, I guess, gives classes on this as well, so I may, I may seek him to try to give us some even further training for the staff. But this is something that Oakland County is providing, and I thought we'd go and take a look at it. And then lastly, you know, I, I know that Councilman Kadekell did mention the memorial that, that's being planned for Sergeant Leach, and obviously, it is, it's a, it's a good thing, and I'm very glad that the city council is going to be participating in this. But the only thing I want to, I want the public to know out there is that they are looking at closing 12 Mile for a portion of the time. So this is something that I know our Public Works Director and our Public Safety Department is working together to figure out a way how we're going to do this. But, so if for a while you see, and I think it's going to happen on Saturday, April 27th, of course, so 12 Mile, those of you that are driving on there, it may be closed for just a little while, while the ceremony is being held. And we appreciate your, your patience and, and assure you that this is being done for a good reason. So thank you to the, to the people out there. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Suboda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Sterne.
Two quick things. First is a reaction to the report given by Councilman Blanchard about the, the liquor control breakout session at the MML. One of the things that came to my attention several months ago was a very quiet change in Lansing where the change I'm referring to in particular is that historically, local or liquor license, classy liquor license transfers into your community required approval of this body. Not anymore. And I see that as a pretty major change of events. And again, it was done very quietly. It wasn't a result of a change in the liquor law, but rather an interpretation at the administrative level. So it would be very good to see the MML be active in trying to restore some local say, if you will, in what could be an important subject. The second item, very quickly, is just a legal update. Some of you, maybe all of you, have already heard something about this in the news media, but since our last city council meeting, there is a looming and potentially significant development in the area of medical marijuana regulation, and that our Michigan Supreme Court has decided to take on a case that arose out of the city of Wyoming. And without getting into all the detail, the significance of it is that it may, and hopefully will, lead to a clear and final decision from our Michigan Supreme Court on the issues of whether the state law, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, preempts local regulations of medical marijuana uses, and perhaps even more importantly, whether the Federal Controlled Substances Act preempts the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. Now, I'm not going to tell you that decision is imminent because in the legal world, imminent means months, maybe even a year or more, but that is something that the Supreme Court has decided to, to put on their plate, and in, in sometime, probably months down the road, maybe we'll get some further clarification on what we can and can't lawfully do at the local level in terms of regulating medical marijuana. And like I said, the larger issue is whether the states can do anything about it.
Very good. Thank you. Interesting issue going forward. We have spent a lot of time on that issue up to now, and it seems like it probably is going to come back again to us. I had a wonderful experience on Friday. Got to visit the second graders at Rogers School. It was magical. There was about 60 of these youngsters, and they were well-prepared and well-behaved and had wonderful questions. They were amused by the use of the gavel and wondered how I maintained order by using the gavel. Would it be necessary to hit people in order to get them to comply? I assured them that the folks on the council and that come to our city council meetings have very well behaved, very mannerly, and we don't need to do that at all. But they had a lot of great questions about how ordinances are proposed, developed, and then enacted. And obviously, they have been studying government for a while in preparation for the visit of the mayor. But amongst the, the wonderful questions was one. "Mr. Mayor, do you ever fall asleep during a council meeting?" And I said, "Actually, no," largely because we're on television, and it's very important to pay attention to what people are saying when you're on television. And I said to the youngster, "Do you ever fall asleep in class?" And she said, "Yes," and went to demonstrate how it's done so that the teacher won't recognize that she's having a sleep. It was, it was a beautiful experience. I would like to thank Michelle Young, the teacher, and her colleagues, the principal and staff of Rogers School, and, and all the parents as well, because these youngsters are youngsters to be proud of in our community, and they're the leaders of the future. And I, I had just a marvelous time with them. And then on Saturday, I had the opportunity of cutting the ribbon on a new business down on 11 Mile. It is called the D-Man Foundation. This is a very important organization in that it provides music therapy for people who have significant disability confined to wheelchairs. It, it works, it really is a tribute to modern technology, that these folks can come there and play music and create and write music without using their hands or feet. So it is amazing technology, and it's great that they're here in our city. They have speech pathologists, and they have physical therapists and music therapists there to help restore meaning to the lives of people who are quite infirm and quite limited physiologically. And so it helps them emotionally. It helps their psychological functioning. And it, it was great to see, I think it was five or six folks who would use those services there in their wheelchairs and their families. And then there was at least a couple hundred people. So this, this is a wonderful organization, the D-Man Foundation, a nonprofit music therapy studio down on 11 Mile Road. And finally, in view of the tragic events that have occurred today in Boston, I'd like to express the condolences and prayers of this council and the residents of the city of Berkeley to the people of Boston, and also to keep in mind the first responders who are on the scene trying to help, doing their best to, to bring calm and order and healing and direction to a chaotic situation. I'm sure this evening is a great deal of distress and fear and pain across Boston and Massachusetts, and we share their pain as fellow Americans, and so our prayers are with them. On that note, Ms. Prince, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadekell.
To the board.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The April 15th meeting is adjourned.